Is there anybody who needs to clear a conflict of interest for today's meeting?
Nope.
Okay, hearing none, I think we can go on. Hi, Sagarikina, thanks for...
Hi.
So, the first item of business is a report from ISO Brazil. Muito bem vindos amigos do Brasil. And I'll ask you just to start whenever you're ready.
May I share my screen?
Yes, absolutely.
No, this is the wrong one. Sorry. Yeah, do you see that?
Yes, we can see it.
Yeah, thank you. So, Ramon, thank you very much for this opportunity for ISO Brazil to make this presentation to the board and maybe have a little time to share with you and discuss some of our activities on our servings and some of our highlights and how we are doing things here in the chapter. So, I will try to go over who we are, what we do, how we do it, and at the end, there are some insights for you, for the board, for ISO. So, who we are, yes. And first of all, why this question? Yes, we are a chapter of the Internet Society, this is clear. But maybe my colleagues know very well the Brazilian context. In Brazil, we have the Brazilian Internet Steering Committee, CGI dot PR since 2005. It follows a multi-stakeholder approach. From the beginning, its board has 21 members from all sectors of the society that are elected by the community itself. It is responsible not only for managing the dot PR, but also for the data and use of the internet in general. It's not a public body, it's a body from the society. So, the NIC dot PR, it's the operational arm of CGI. It exists since 2005, it implements CGI dot PR's projects and, of course, manages the dot PR. And together, CGI and NIC dot PR, they offer a very wide range of services for the society here in Brazil. A capacity building of a lot of technical and non-technical issues as well. The Brazilian IGF for almost 15 years now, various flavors of schools of electronic governments, a lot of different studies, surveys of internet preparation of all parts of the society. They built the largest network of IXP's in the world. The IXP from Sao Paulo is a huge one. They organize a lot of any different events, make strong advocacy in the country. So, it's like all the CGI and NIC dot PR, but maybe also because of them, Brazil developed a very robust internet governance ecosystem. There are thousands or maybe hundreds of very active NGO, think tanks, academic growth, industry associations and others dealing with digital issues and mostly with internet issues. So, in this context, ISO Brazil must play a complementary role, something that is unique. This mission, it does not make sense to compete with other organizations. On the contrary, we partner with many of these entities in the ecosystem, trying to offer a different perspective from the Internet Society. So, sorry. So, that we have what we could call the classical chapter mission representing all the mission principles of the Internet Society here in Brazil, to develop technical education with the communities, to contribute to the all the activities of the Internet Society here in Brazil. And we had developed help with public consultations from the Internet Society. We have developed internet backbreaks. We have tried to participate in many events for the Internet Society. And we try, of course, to be a very active stakeholder in discussion of policy issues here in Brazil. So, our team, our board of directors, you see there, Pedro is with us. Raquel will try to join us as soon as possible. And the president, Raquel's vice president, and Pedro, director of projects. We have three other more people in the board. And it's very vigorous, you see Joe Whelan, who are men in the moment, who represent... You see, Brazil is a huge country. We have a single chapter in Brazil. It really can represent all regions in the country. We have four regions that are represented here in the board, from five different states. Three of these board members, Pedro himself, come from the youth movement, which is also very strong in Brazil. We have, as of today, around 1,100 individual members. Sixty of them are coding members in our bylaws. They pay and they can vote. We have around 100 members that have been very active in different activities of the chapter in recent years. We also have minor organization members, technical organizations like NIC dot PR, NGO, think tanks, academic institutions and tech companies. So, what do we do? We do advocacy, of course. With, for instance, publicly statements on various national and international policy issues with support, statements from other organizations. We have been a member from the Global Encryption Coalition since the beginning, also from the American Covidian Alliance for Protection. And we have supported many of their statements. We do a lot of capacity building, online courses, presentations for non-technical people, for policymakers, so that we can positively influence public policies in Brazil. We develop projects as many as we can within our possibilities. Here I give you some examples of recent projects. We had a project around six years ago, an expansion of a community network for traditional rural communities in the north of Brazil. This was a partnership with Mapeh, one of our organizational members. This was supported by Beyond the Net Fund. Where not, that project was supported by a lot of Beyond the Net Fund. It was advocacy and perception of encryption in the country. This was also partnership with a model organization, Eris. It's a think tank, also one for organizational members. We are developing now, reaching the end of a project on advocacy on policies for community networks and digital inclusion. This is also in partnership with one of our regional members, the Institute of Base on Brazil, supported by Beyond the Net Fund. And we are also closing a project on perceptions of digital sovereignty in Brazil, together with another, still another organizational member, which is Cepia FGV, which is a very renowned academic institution in Brazil. This is supported by Beyond the Net Fund. In this project in particular, we are preparing an internet impact brief, one bill in Brazil on platform regulation, but from the perspective of digital sovereignty. We have a campaign, a project together with ITS Rio, it's a modern think tank here in Brazil, on the fair share model. Of course, we are fighting for share model. Surely, it's dangerous to the internet infrastructure, to not networking clarity, for many other properties of the internet. We have support from various companies that are also over this debate. And we have another project on perceptions and analysis of proposals for innovation of new content. Pedro here is the leader of this project. We got support from Google Brazil, and this is also in development now. And both these two projects here, we will prepare an internet impact brief on these two different subjects. They are granted for dissonance. We offer a lot of capacity building, mostly online courses, because Brazil is so huge, so it makes no sense for us to try to offer onsite courses in the country. We had offered two editions of a course on the internet way of networking. Of course, about Internet Society and policy-related issues, together with Cepia FGV. We got support also from Twitter, the former Twitter, not X, the X social network, but the former Twitter. We had two editions of this course with more than 200 people registered for the course from all the country. We had also two editions from a course, online course on community networks, covering technical, relational, regulatory aspects of community networks. This was also partnership with NGO, Institute of Base on Brazil, and we got support, small grants, to support these two editions of this course. We had a course on encryption, both fundamentals of policy-related issues. It was partnership with Eris. And this was part of the Beyond the Net Fund grant that supported the project together with this entity. And also on digital sovereignty, we offered a course on policy issues regarding digital sovereignty. It was last year and also in partnership with Cepia FGV. We contributed to many public consultations in recent years to the the public consultation on platform regulation from UNESCO, STL, from the United Nations that year on global digital callback. CGI dot PR, Internet Steering Committee, had a very large other consultation on platform regulation, which is also a very robust contribution to that. We set a contribution to the public consultation from Amatel, the Brazilian telecom regulator, regarding the fair share proposal. There is a new consultation open by Amatel. We will submit a new consultation again. And then we are closing today, contribution to the net media respect public consultation. So, how we do all these things? Mostly based on partnerships with different organizations, logos. Most of them are organizational members. And you see here, the logos of many of those organizations. And not only the projects and the online courses that I mentioned before, but also we partner with that in the organization of several events. And in this case, physical events in different cities of the country where those decisions are located. We have working groups. The Working Group on Internet Media Liability exists since 2020. It helped us to prepare contributions of the public consultations. This working group got to take a look on the Brazilian law of intermedia liability. Issued a lot of different public statements on policy issues here in Brazil. They have already one internet impact brief on a previous bill that was in national congress on moderation, and is preparing right now another impact brief on the Bill 3630. We call it in Brazil the Fake News Bill, because it tries to watergate fake news on social media. And we are doing this internet impact brief from the perspective of possible risks to the intermedia liability model we have in Brazil. And we have around 55 members right now in this working group. In 2022, we started a working group on digital sovereignty. Also helped prepare contributions of the public consultation. There's about 15 members now. These two working groups have usually monthly meetings. And we are right now starting two new working groups, one on encryption and another one on meaningful connectivity. Of course, we do a lot of cooperation with Internet Society. We have permanent cooperation with the staff base in Brazil. We see Paula here join the meeting, very close cooperation with Paula, with Jean-Paul. We regularly participate in the regional online events organized by the Team of Latin America. We try to cooperate with other chapters, not as much as we would like. We already had cooperation with ISO Portugal on encryption. We had a meeting with ISO Canada a few weeks ago. We are trying to start some cooperation on internet liability litigation in Stockholm. And there are plans for a large program on safer internet for Latin America. This was initiative by Lito Ibarra from Buenos Aires. And Brazil will help him. And we are hoping that other chapters from Latin America will join us in this effort. We submitted contributions to PDPs from ISO, both Internet Network Work in 2020 and the neighbors of Internet Network Work in 2021. And we are now planning to submit a contribution to the Internet Activity PDP that will be launched by Internet Society this year. And we are already in contact with Count Gumbert, the team from ISO, to discuss possibilities for us to help in this PDP. We are speaking to the Global Encryption Coalition, as I mentioned before, to the Latin American Caribou Alliance for Protection. In this case, we are one of the main supporters of this alliance. We have recently been approved as members of the Black of Arrow and through Latin American Caribou, a regional at-large organization for ICANN. And also, we are one of the founding members of a new Brazilian network on cybersecurity. We get funding from ISO Foundation, the organization program, both small and large grants. We have the annual funding. And for some of our projects, we got direct support from companies based in Brazil, such as Google, Twitter and WhatsApp. Of course, we have, this is very important, think kind support from the project partners. They have entities which will make out those initiatives. And we have some fees from the difficult and organizational members. In the last, the recent three, four years, our overall budget was around $1,100 per year. So, and then to close this very quick presentation, some insights from all to the Internet Society. One thing is, we have a broad, very broad area of activities, initiatives. Try to be very active here in Brazil. And so that we can be heard, so that we are known by the community in Brazil. And as I said to you before, this is a very, very robust ecosystem in Brazil. There are lots of organizations working here. And we need to make a difference. We need to partner with a lot of those entities, but we also need to do things by ourselves. And for this, of course, we need funding. We depend heavily, when I talk about the funding from ISO, ISO Foundation, Beyond the Net Program, but the rules are a little bit too restrictive for our activities. We can have most one large grant in the same moment. So, I mentioned to you three different large grants by presentation, but the email for suppression, we cannot have two of them in parallel. Right now, in this week, you head to the side in our board among two different proposals that have been made by entities that are organizational members that want to develop the project that could be funded by large grant. Proposals are excellent, but we have to choose one of them. And we'll try to find other types of funding for the second proposal. And it's important to note this, that we are not able to compete with our organizations in Brazil in other ISO foundations programs. You would say, well, you can submit something to the research program or connecting young connected or things like that. But you see, we don't have one step. We are a bunch of fellow peers. Nobody is getting a penny here. We do it this besides our professional activities. So, it's very hard for us to prepare very large projects. We depend heavily on the partnership with other entities. And those entities are probably better prepared to submit proposals to these other programs from ISO foundations. So, this is one problem we have. We would love to get some more robust funding from ISO Foundation. A second thing that's a completely different. We take the chapters, you see, we are very active. We try to help in all the programs called Internet Society. We try to collaborate with the staff, both here and Latin America and Brazil. Paula is there, she can give her testimony of this, that they collaborate very closely. And please don't see this as a complaint about the people. The people in Internet Society is wonderful, really wonderful. The staff is wonderful, we can easily access them. Our regional engagement team here in Latin America, Lancy, Christian, my first time here from Latin America. They are wonderful also. So, we have, I am now a member of the steering committee of the Chapters Advisory Council. We get a lot of support from Christine. So, that's a lot about the people. That's about the chapters having more opportunities really to contribute to the formulation, not only to get unidirectional communication from ISO, but really a bidirectional dialogue with the staff, with the board, to discuss ISO's policy positions, programs and strategies before they are there, loud and with their formulation already closed. So, there are very few opportunities for this effective interaction with the board, with senior staff and even with other chapters. So, we would love to see more of those opportunities. Maybe, because we want to contribute, there is a lot of expertise in many other chapters as well. And we could help. I don't know exactly which mechanism this would be. As I said to you, I am now a member of the steering committee of the Chapters Advisory Council. But I see that the council could have a much more prominent role in creating those opportunities. And discussing with the board, with the staff, which kind of entities the chapters could have to really contribute to the board effectively. So, sorry for rushing a lot, I speak too fast, sorry for that. I see Pedro there, I don't know if Raquel could already join. Pedro, would you like to add something to my consultation?
No, Flavio, I think it was already very complete.
Thank you, Pedro. So...
Barry is first?
Barry?
Yep.
Okay, hi, this is Barry Lebo. On the fake news bill stuff, I had the opportunity at the Internet Governance Forum in October in Kyoto to see a lightning talk presentation by some Brazilian students who were working on missing study information and disinformation on the internet. This is an important topic to me. And I just wanted to say that I appreciate the work that you guys are doing on this in Brazil and hope that it will expand to elsewhere. And I see Pedro's comments in the chat as well about the bill. So, thank you for the work you're doing.
Yeah, yeah, the youth movement in Brazil is very strong. And this, we can say our thanks to the Brazilian Internet Steering Committee. We started this model 10 years ago. And every year, they select a bunch of youths, 50, 60 people. They give some training on internet governance, on many issues on internet governance to them. And they send those youngsters to the Brazilian IGF, to the Latin American Caribou IGF and to the Global IGF. So, that's why you saw these youngsters there in Kyoto during the Global IGF. Luis, yeah?
Muchas gracias, Flavio, thank you very much. And first, I want to congratulate Brazil chapter, because it really reaffirms the leadership of ISO Brazil in Latin America and is one of the top chapters around the world, one of the most involved in chapter, in ISO mission. So, please convey our congratulations to them, to them and all your staff. Also, I want to point out that Brazil represents, at least in this part of the world, the ideal of multi-stakeholder model, right? The is where we see the most of collaboration between all the parties. Some people say that is because NIC Brazil has had a lot of influence. Some people say it's the CGI. But I feel that it won't happen if there was not a strong ISO in Brazil. So, I think that's the right path and please continue expanding that work so other chapters get infused with that spirit. Now, the two questions. One, in the beginning of your presentation, you were saying that there are about 100 active members. But the ISO numbers say that there are about 1,100 members. So, I find that a 10 difference, yes? So, that is one question. And the other question is, I see that you charge fees for those voting and organizational members. So, how do people perceive this fee? Do they pay it happily? And if it's not very confident, how much do they pay for a fee? Thank you.
So, I will try to respond, and Pedro, please, you can comment after. So, when I use this expression "active members", I meant members that have been actively involved in recent activities. Let's take the last 12 months. So, either helping to address the internet impact briefs or contribution to the whole public consultation, or active in the different working groups we have, or being part of our online courses, seeing lectures in our online courses, things like that. So, people, what people that are part of the teams that are helping with the different projects, things like that. So, I try to count how many members are directly involved in these activities. Of course, we have 1,100 members that are active in the sense that they renew their membership to the Internet Society and to the chapter every year. But I'm not counting people that attend our courses, that attend our events, you know, that are informed by our activity. These are, of course, then the whole 100, 1,100 people. But I mean only those that are actively involved. And I see hundreds of people, but of people. And this is one of the reasons why we can develop so many things in parallel. Pedro, would you like to comment on this, please?
I think I would. It would be interesting to mention as well that we had a good surge, a great surge of youth members participating in the last one year or two years. We got a lot of interest and a lot of engagement from people who came out, mainly for this Youth Brazil program, but also other programs such as the Youth Ambassador Program for ISO. So, it's been an interesting part of our recent movements.
Yeah, and we got your other question about the fees. We charge $10, $12. So, it's nothing yet to the individual members, yeah? So, the people that want to participate as voters in our elections and that want to be elected as officer of the chapter, they must be voting members. So, paying members. And they pay these $12 per year as fees. This is, so this is lacking yet. But still, we have only 60 people paying those fees in the moment. So, that's a question, because you see, most people can be very active in the chapter, doing different things in our projects and courses and so on, working groups. And they do not need to pay to take part in those activities. The organizational members instead, there are two categories, one of paying members and the other one for non-paying members. Because many of those NGOs, think tanks, that are members, they do not have the resources to pay fees as organizational members. But then we have only three or four organizational members that pay fees. And then they can choose one of different categories. For instance, Google Brazil is one of organizational members. They pay, I can say it because this is public, they pay $2,000 per year. NIC dot PR is also a member, they pay $1,000. They can choose what we pay.
Excellent, so that's very inclusive, congratulations. Muito obrigado.
So, I don't know whether you've seen this in the chat, but I wanted to reflect that Ramon had sent his congratulations to the chapter and noted you're doing an incredible job and inspiring other chapters around the world. I'd like to add my own congratulations. It certainly seems like you've made the most of both of the partnerships there in Brazil with CGI and NIC dot PR and the various organizational members and other partners. And also with the Beyond the Net Grants, you've been very successful in turning those into actual on-the-ground projects. And I kind of wanted to ask, you know, are there particular learnings you want to share with us of how you do that over such a large territory? Because as you... Because as you pointed out earlier, obviously, Brazil is very, very large. And, you know, doing an effective, active chapter in a small region is in many ways simpler because it's easier to get everybody together, et cetera. So how is it that you are driving that success over such a large territory?
Yeah, maybe I don't have all the answers to you. But what I think is, of course, it always depends on hard work and commitment from the people. So we are volunteers that lead the chapter. So without our commitment, hard work, it would not be possible. Not only the hard work of the officers, but also many of those active members, as I call them, that work at the, Pedro, it's great. You have a lot of new young members that came to the chapter because they see the chapters as an opportunity for their professional trajectories. As I said, the CGI dot PR has this very incredible program for training youth, sending them to different IGFs. And then most of these people are very eager to develop a real professional career in the internet governance sphere. So the chapter is a very good way for them to get involved, even if in a voluntary basis, but really to get involved in very relevant activities that have a impact. So they feel motivated to contribute to us. So we have a lot of young people. The two leaders of the working group on internet reliability are young people. So very young people, so on. This, so they can even have leadership positions. Yeah, Pedro came from this movement. Also, Giovanna and Tobias are helping our board. So they can very quickly reach leadership positions because the chapter is offering this to them. How can we reach the whole category? Well, this is because we do many things remotely. That's no way, no way of doing elsewhere, that way.
One thing we can add about that is also the model that we have on partnerships with different organizations. We also proactively choose organizations from different regions. For example, we took a recent decision on grants and consider the regional aspect of it. So we try to always reach people and organizations from different places of the country to get like the maximum outreach that we can. And if we focus too much on just the regions around us, we wouldn't be able to do that.
Yeah, yeah. These organizational members, our partners come from north and south and center of the country. So we come from everywhere. You see, the internet governance community in Brazil is very interconnected. Because of, and this is again one of the main principles of CGI. The Brazilian IGF is a very strong IGF. It gathers 500 people onsite every year, and this rotates in the country. And our annual meeting of the chapter is always one of the activities at day zero of the Brazilian IGF. So we rotate the country together with the Brazilian IGF. Although we are not in agreement with the organization of the Brazilian IGF because this is done by CGI PR, but we organize our meeting together with the Brazilian IGF in day zero. So then we rotate the country. We had a meeting in Manaus, it was done as a vision five years ago. We had meeting in Goiânia, this is South Brazil, near Brasilia. We had a meeting in Batau, this is far northeast. And then this year, it will be in Curitiba, this is South Brazil. So you see, we had it within years.
I have one more quick question.
Mother that come around the country.
And that sounds like it's been very successful. I did want kind of one follow-up question about the youth, though. Obviously, one of the things you mentioned is the Net Mundial Plus 10, which is kind of going on in April of this year. Many of these youths would not have been around the previous step of Mundial. How are they reacting to it? How is your chapter reacting to it?
The Net Mundial, yeah, please.
Yeah, about the specific youth question, one of the things the ISOC chapter is doing right now, the contribution is being done with youth. So actually, it's only youth are writing it, but the others are also, of course, the heads of the board is also reviewing it. But the main contribution is from people that just entered in the internet governance system. I also review, but most people are younger than me. So they didn't get the debates from 10 years ago, but they are updating themselves on what to do. And they are very interested. A lot of people from Brazil that are going to Net Mundial this year and a lot of our chapter members are part of this youth community.
Yeah. The chapter itself is not directly involved in Net Mundial, yeah? I myself am involved, I'm part of the team of the Secretariat of Net Mundial. But this is another thing, this completely unrelated to the chapter. Because of my collaboration with CGI PR.
Understood.
Different thing, yeah. But of course, the Brazilian community is very enthusiastic about Net Mundial. We were already very enthusiastic about Net Mundial in 2014. And we had a lot of Brazilians registering to attend onsite. Not all of them could be selected because there was a limitation in places. But I would say a lot of our, as Pedro said, a lot of our members will be there not because they are members of the chapter, because they were selected to attend the meeting. Yeah, Luiz?
Yes, Flavio. Now that you are talking about Net Mundial, can you tell us briefly what is the advancement of the organization? And also, we are very eager to know, how can we support as ISOC to the Brazil chapter and their involvement in Net Mundial?
Thank you for the question, Luiz. And as I knew that this question would come, I prepared a few slides and if you allow, I will share those few slides with you, yeah? Okay, let me try to do it. So where is my? Trying to find my. Sorry, just on my cap. Having some difficulty here in finding the right, no, not this, sorry. Yeah, this is. So sorry for that, mate. So this is Net Mundial plus ten. And then you see why Net Mundial plus ten? We had Net Mundial 10 years ago, 2014. And since then, we saw all of us in the world, the rapid evolution of digital conservation of our society. And then we found that arose that were not so relevant 10 years ago, of AI and cybercrime, disinformation, hate speech, and related. All things that became very relevant in recent years. And because of that, there was an increasing number of multilateral decision-making spaces that became relevant and aware of those. And then trying to discuss them and propose norms or regulations. And people felt there have been very few opportunities for really meaningful contributions from other stakeholders group in those multilateral spaces. And many cities as a threat for the whole stakeholder governance approach. Cities also see also fragmentation of digital governance space. And then Net Mundial was in 2014. And Net Mundial plus ten can be now again and have a very multi-stakeholder setting and only co-fuji. Yeah, this means all sectors are in composition to offer their perspective. This is then a unique environment for this discussion. It's different from a multilateral space where the other stakeholders group can contribute. This is a real from the beginning of the stakeholder space. So then the main objective of the event is a discussion of the evolution of the governance of the digital world. It's not like in 2014 where there were concrete issues. Then we had again a transition. In 2014, we had all the snowing revelations and all the dreams about vigilantism and disdain. So we will not discuss concrete issues such as AI or misinformation or hate speech. Now, the idea is to discuss the evolution of the governance of the digital world. So reconfirm all stakeholders committed to the Net Mundial digital governance process principles from the statement in 2014. Discuss their implementation. Maybe complement those process principles. They add something to them because of the evolution saw in recent years. Then prepare the evolution and implementation of the multi-stakeholder approach of basis for inclusive governance of the digital world. And strengthen discussions on that and evolve structures, log, and for the multi-stakeholder approaches and protocols, complete protocols, how to implement multi-stakeholder approaches to shape better decisions. So High Level Executive Committee have been formed with 27 members from all sectors, from all regions. And a public consultation was opened, it closes today. I don't know how many contributions have been submitted so far. Yesterday evening, we had a number along the 70. But we are hoping that we have much more than 100 contributions submitted to the consultation. And it was organized around three main parts. One, on questions regarding principles for digital governance processes. A second part of guidelines for the implementation of multi-stakeholder acades. And then a third part regarding inputs to ongoing processing GNC, which is plus 20, but also about the IGF. This High Level Committee is responsible for drafting a first version of the outcome document. Based on the feedback we get from this public consultation, this first draft will be available maybe around 22nd of April. And the final version of the outcome document will be then prepared during the value, the contribution of all people, both present there, inside and somewhere, but also remotely participating. The idea is to have, and we have to make some action process because of the space there, only 500 onsite attendees were allowed. And the High Level Committee decided then to select 100 people from each of five stakeholders group. Stakeholder groups, as you see here, the four conditional ones, government, private sector, technical community, civil society. Also, I can anyone's separate stakeholder group. So we then selected 100 people from each stakeholder group. Just to be clear, I'm not a member of the High Level Executive Committee. I am part of the team that is the Secretariat that supports the work of the High Level Executive Committee. So then regarding the specific question from Luiz, so what we could expect from ISOC? First, to remember, ISOC was one of the great legion supporters of Net Mundial back in 2014. So this is important to remember. We have one of the entities that made possible Net Mundial in 2014 together with ICH and other ISOC organizations. Now, for the Net Mundial, we first created a small scoping team. And we invited ISOC to be part of the scoping team. Isra process was one of those professionals that was submitted by ISOC. This scoping team made initial definitions in December, around the concrete scope of the event that what teams of interest, what would he expect in the outcome document. And now Sebastian Deragon was one of the members of the High Level Executive Committee handled by ISOC. What could we expect from ISOC? So strong public commitment supporting the event and its goals. So disseminated event through its social media, various communication channels with chapters, members, community at large. We would love to see a strong movement of the overall ISOC community or colony or its staff, but also all the chapters and the members. And submit contributions to the public consultation. I saw yesterday evening that we got a windy contributions from ISOC Libya. And I think ISOC Berlin. I don't know, Ramonu is there, if you can confirm this? We got from two chapters. And today, at least of the Brazilian chapter, we also submit a contribution to the consultation. And of course, we would love to see a strong movement of ISOC in the texting of the outcome document, not only because Sebastian was one of the members of the High Level Executive Committee, but also during the event, yeah, all people representing ISOC that will be either in person in Sao Paulo or remotely. And if you want to join remotely, the registration is still open. There are still places available for joining remotely. It will be also seen, that could be seen by YouTube, but then you have no possibility of interaction, but it will be also on YouTube. But people that are not able to come to Sao Paulo, please join remotely. Yeah, you can still register for that. And of course, we would love to see a total support from ISOC as much as its community as possible, yeah? From board members, staff, senior staff, but also regional staff. And chapter leaders that lack funding to come to the event. I know we are only less than three weeks from the event now. And maybe some of those things are not possible to organize anymore. But anyway, these are the things that we would love to see from ISOC. If not in this preparation phase, at least afterwards, having a strong public commitment inspiring the messages and recommendations that you will take in the outcome document. So if you want some more information about the event or something else, please, I'm not available to try to respond to you.
So thank you very much, Flavio. I will ask people to keep their interventions on the short as obviously, it came to Flavio, it's here talking about a non-ISOC event. And obviously, we're happy to have his expertise in that matter. But if you can limit your questions or interventions on this to to the overlap with where ISOC's interests, that would be great. Thanks. Luiz, I believe you had your inter.
Yes, just a quick intervention. Thanks, Flavio, for this. We understand your role in the Net Mundial. That's why I was asking about the support from ISOC to the chapter in Brazil. And I'm just curious if there's going to be a declaration around multi-stakeholder and if ISOC Chapter Brazil is active in building that declaration. Thank you.
You mean the outcome declaration from the book, the output step?
Sorry?
Do you mean this declaration that will come as a document of the event?
Yes.
Yes, this, all people attending the event, both onsite and remotely, will have the opportunity to contribute to the final version of the document. So the draft will be publicly available by the end of next week, I suppose. And then everyone would have the opportunity to see the document and to prepare contributions and then counter the event, either in person or remotely, and contribute. As I said, our chapter, I can explain it, yeah, a bunch of youngsters from our chapter. I am preparing a contribution that will be submitted today because today is the last day of the consultation. And many of our members will be there in Sao Paulo, so during the event. So yes, the chapter will try to contribute as much as possible to the final version of the outcome document.
Excellent.
Raquel, could you have something you wanted to add there? It looks like you have an introduction in big section.
Yeah, Raquel would like, you'd love to add something. Raquel, my spouse is now there. Many of you know Raquel from her time as staff of ISOC. And now we take advantage of Raquel's expertise as our vice president.
Thank you very much. And in fact, Flavio, first apologies for being late. I was in another presentation as the Vice President of ISOC Brazil Chapter about new networks. So some chimpity events happening all over. But my revision was about our and Flavio, and I think so. Thank you very much. The ISOC Brazil contribution that is being built.
Thank you. Any other interventions or questions? Any other uh interventions or questions for Flavio on this topic? Well, let me thank you again, Flavio, for not just one, but two great presentations to the board today, I really appreciate uh your time and putting those together, and they're both very informative. And especially the work of the chapter is is more than informative, it is inspiring, as as Romanu said earlier. Uh, it really is something that makes us uh see how the chapters can uh really make a difference and uh in such a broad swath of different ways in policy matters, in. Community network building and in um building up. Uh, understandings of internet governance in in the next generation, so it's really very inspiring to see the work of your chapter, thank you again.
Okay, thank you Ted for the nice words and it was a pleasure to to be here with you. And on the set, the chapters are eager to contribute to the board, to the senior staff. And trying to help shape uh ISO's positions and policies, type of these programs and so on. So we are hoping to have more opportunities like that to 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 have this uh. If our consultations again. We can try to 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 figure out uh other ways of having this very positive dialogue with him. So and as I said, I am now a member of the state committee, the check chapters advisory council. We'll try to make some proposals there, so that we can build more opportunities for chapters to play engage in those discussions.
Thank you for that as well. Uh, if there is nothing else on this topic, I think we will turn to our next agenda item. Uh, which is the.
Bye, thank you very much, yeah, bye bye.
Thank you, muito obrigado.
De nada, thank you. Bye bye.
At the approach.
Hope to see you many few years upon, yeah, bye bye.
Uh, so the next thing uh is the elections committee report, Victor?
Yeah, sure, let me share it up here, one moment, please. You can all see my screen?
Yes.
Awesome, okay. So um, just a quick report, we we are still in the elections process as we speak. Um, just quickly, the uh elections committee is comprised of the members that you see on your screen there, including myself. Charles, uh, Mark, Robert, Laura. And then we have a couple of the committee members and Andrew Sullivan serving on the uh committee. The, we are currently on schedule based on what was published earlier in the year. Um, we are now in post, uh, the elections have concluded, and I'm going to walk through the process update in a sec. And and we're in the challenge period and we currently, you know, fingers crossed, hope that uh we can maintain schedule and and get to the end of the process. So the candidate forums opened on March eighth on schedule as as expected. Um, and closed on March twenty second. The voting started on March twenty second um on schedule and closed last Friday on the fifth. And the votes were certified uh by Monday of this past week, which is April eighth. And then we had since sent out communication um to the chapter delegates and the org members, notifying them of the results. And the um. And the selections. As well as that we had entered as of this week into the challenge period, which is currently active. Um, our plan would be, uh, and if we receive any, we we will address those or those will get addressed, uh, if we were to receive any of those. Um, they may be lodged currently up until the fifteenth of April at fifteen hundred UTC. The um. The the chapters, just to kind of go over the current status of things, uh, the chapters, uh, there were two candidates with one seat available, Maureen Hilliard was selected for a three-year term. Um, uh, the statistics on the election were. We had a hundred thirteen eligible chapters of not of which ninety-four voted, which is about eighty-three point one nine percent. Um, and uh, so in those, and she has been informed. Um, and and is aware of that selection. On the organizational member side, uh, we had four candidates with one seat available. Um, Kathleen Moriarty uh was um as part of that process selected for a three-year term. Um, as a trustee, the org members were informed of that result. Um, and were sent out a notification on uh Monday as well. On the org side, we had a slightly lower percentage um. In terms of uh how many org members voted versus how many were eligible. We had ninety forty-seven participate in votes or cast votes versus the eighty-one eligible. So um, you know, slightly different there. I don't currently have the statistics on year-over-year, how that is trending, uh, but that's currently where we are in this process. I was planning as part of the concluded conclusion of the committee to kind of look at more of a trend line and see how meaningful that would be for us to look at. In terms of long-term planning for vote of the elections process. So that's currently the summary view for today, I'm happy to take any questions. Um, at this point.
Any questions for Victor? I don't see any, so uh, thank you very much for the report. Uh, the next report is the P I R nominations committee report.
Yeah, I'm sharing my screen, so that is okay. Thank you very much again, everybody, for your for your words in concluding election thing, we go into the P I R nominations committee. So the uh. Process is concluded ahead of time with a lot of support from Lauren, which we really, really appreciate that. And the uh, well, the the members of the nominations committee, we have been in close work with the P I R. And the uh. We ended selecting two candidates, as you know, because you voted the resolution, which is Eric Burger and George Zdowski. And the uh, the resolution is already voted, so finally, uh, there there is this record for the next committee. And with some uh improvements and recommendations, right? The uh, the P I R. Board strongly appreciated that transparency and interaction with ISO board. Towards a uh better process, we were able to make corrections during the 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 time lapse of the of the whole process. So the uh, I suggest to continue in that line, yes, they are really wanting to improve things. And the uh, they are looking for quality things, the. The rest is just the about the questions, yes, we found people already sharing the questions, so they need to be worded again. And the space for interviews, yes, that is the most stressing point in the schedule. And the the, well, the call of nominations, which got the improvement of the uh telling about the background check. And the uh, what we really stresses me and some of the committee members is people got confused that it was. This was a call for the board of trustees and the uh, that's very stressing. I also point out that maybe in the schools of governance, they they don't show the difference between the P I R and ISO, but the uh. That that point should be stressed out in our education, our mission. So that's it, thank you very much, and the for those uh trustees that contributed to the process, I'm very, very uh. Uh, grateful and thankful about it, and thank you again, Lauren. Any questions, I'm very happy to answer.
Uh, thank you very much, Luis, I did want to just pick up on one thing you said, and that was, we we had forty-seven um. People volunteer, and that's a very high number, but there were quite a few that I think were probably. Um, not really understanding the position that they were applying for. Um, and I think we we probably do want to think pretty hard about. What we can do in the process to to clarify, you know, what. What what the actual role is, because I think there are a lot of people who come to this with the idea that it's um. It's like being a part of a chapter or like being part of a SIG, where they'll go out and they'll undertake specific activities. Um, and although there's a a portion of the. The charitable mission that is specific to uh P I R, that uh the board certainly engages in, their board certainly engages in. Uh, uh, as as we all know, it's its main functions are to run that business. Um, and so I think. The the number of people who just were not clear about that, and that forty-seven was startling. And and I think we probably need to be a little bit more blunt. Uh, when we write the uh the document that that's the case.
Yeah, and also the P I R may need to make some communication, clear communication to the chapters and the. Public in general about their mission and function, right? Because they're running a business, so that is uh uh different, but related to. I think Caleb has a.
Yeah, I think more importantly, um, most, most applicants who apply for that position applied thinking it's a job. Right, and it was a bit disappointing that they all think it's a job. Um, when they were pushing out their resumes for review and all of that. Um, and it boils down to one particular thing that even most of the applicants. They all, yeah, applicants, not candidate this time around, uh, did not even understand the difference between. What a registry is or where registrar is or those basic. Things that you would expect that someone um who wants to come and sit on the board of an organization is not. Um, taking their time to. Um, even study the very basic things uh or basic fabric of what that organization is, so. Um, it was a bit disappointing and stressful that most of them didn't have. Basic understanding and they just think it's a job interview. And more importantly, again, I also think there was a language barrier. Um, uh, a a language barrier that we. We need to bridge, I don't know how that is going to happen, but it's just a suggestion and an addition to. Um, the contributions, um, our very good chair, um, Luis, as mentioned.
Uh, Charles and then Victor?
Yes, I think we are doing quite a bit more promotion on like social media, like games and so on about the position, so. Uh, yeah, I think it's inevitable that some people may come forward without full understanding about, you know, all the things that's been mentioned. But I'm thinking in future, in terms of the process, maybe the committee the the could consider. Uh, maybe a smaller number of people or maybe one or two people uh to do a pre-screening before the whole group. Uh, go ahead with a full interview, I don't know whether or not that's something that can be considered, you know, other than rather than, you know, wasting. Or spending, you know, the the everybody in the interview's time, you know, for an hopeful hour. If some of these people may have been screened out because uh, and and on the other hand, that may actually help us pick out. Maybe a few of the others that we might have missed because of whatever reason, just looking at their resume, uh, that doesn't come across as attractive, but in the end, they might be actually. Maybe they should have been interviewed rather than the ones that we pick, uh, so just a thought.
Thank you, Victor?
Um, just, I'll actually just double what Charles said there, and perhaps these conversations happened before, right? It was kind of twofold, one is, I was wondering how indicative of that from past years, so is this kind of the nature of how this process goes? And the answer might be yes, or maybe we're trending up or down, I don't have that data in front of me, but that'd be interesting to know, maybe as a a a conclusion to it. And the second is, is there something we can do procedurally? So that we can, uh, you know, quantitatively, so that we could, you know, focus on, you know, the right candidates and spend time with them. I again, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that would or would not work, I think Charles, you had a pretty decent suggestion there. Maybe, uh, you know, kind of like two phases of screening might be helpful, or at least one phase to kind of uh whittle it down, because, I mean, I know in day job, you know. We also have lots of positions that we, you know, look for, and I've done this in multiple organizations, and there's always going to be some segment of population where there are candidates that just don't fit. The roles, and then we have all kinds of procedural ways by which to try to whittle that down into the the right candidate groups to be able to select from, etc. That's my own real comment.
Uh, Charles, you've got your hand up, is that from the forward or? Okay, uh, so it sounds like, uh, when this uh committee comes back together next year, we probably want to to take this advice forward to them. And um, make sure that they understand that some of the issues that they may be facing are in are in making sure that the pool of candidates actually understands that though. Um, the next item on the agenda is approving the date and location of the annual general meeting, there is a resolution for this. Um. Vlad, can you put the resolution? Uh, so it's a pretty simple resolution that the Internet Society Board of Trustees approves the dates twenty-two, twenty-three. June for its twenty twenty-four annual general meeting in Reston, Virginia. Is there any discussion of the resolution? Okay, uh, all those in favor, please raise your hand either in the tool or. Oh, and Brian, I think you're only on the phone, so if you want to give yours uh audibly, that's from. I don't got the tool, okay? Okay, so it seems like we are agreed uh on this new set of dates, that's good, it will give us a chance to work with the P I R board. Uh, who'll be having their uh meeting the day after, uh, so they'll be able to join us uh for a joint meeting. At the end of our AGM and and probably also uh. On some sort of social occasion as well, so that we can have a chance to to meet with them and only, which is always very valuable.
That the P I R board uh board meeting will happen after the AGM?
Yes.
Uh, because I was looking forward to meet them to discuss these recommendations, so the uh, I won't be able as a trustee.
Uh, so I'm, I am sure that the current uh. Where chair would be happy to sit down with you and discuss this because I, she's been so welcoming of the um. Uh, the interaction with your your committee, so I I suggest you reach out to Sarah and see how she would like to take the advice.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so I think we go into executive session now to discuss the strategy communications plan, uh, so.